All right, welcome everybody to the Kamaki Neighborhood Board Number Four October Meeting. It is now six thirty P M. So we're gonna start off with the city and state monthly reports. And we'll start off with the Honolulu Fire Department. Fire Department, are you online?
HPD online.
Okay, all right, so no one from the Fire Department at the moment, so we will move on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Hi, good evening, Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven, East Honolulu. The following are the monthly statistics for September. Motor vehicle theft was thirteen, burglary of five, theft was twenty-two, and U E M V car break-ins were sixteen, with total calls for service six thousand one hundred and nineteen. Our safety tip for the month is Halloween safety. And we like to provide the following safety tips. Please have costumes that are bright and reflective and easy to see. If you are planning on having a costume that has any type of weapons associated with it, please make them readily identifiable as replicas. Any young children who may be trick-or-treating should have a parent or a responsible adult. And everyone should have a flashlight if they're trick-or-treating or out in the evening time at night. And please stay on well-lit streets and sidewalks, not in the street. And finally, although tampering, incidents of tampering with treats and candy is rare, if that does occur, or you suspect that any candy may be tampered with, please call nine one one immediately, request to have an officer so we can conduct an investigation. And again, related to that, please check the candy before any kind of consumption. But that is our report for the month, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Lieutenant. Any questions for the Honolulu Police Department? The board, go ahead.
Aloha, Aloha Lieutenant Nishimura, this is Paul from the board. I wanted to ask, did you guys get a call either last night, late last night, or early this morning regarding encampment fire under the Kamaki Bridge? It was either, like, I think it was around nine, after nine P M last night. H F D would have probably be called first, but I don't know if you guys know anything about it, because H F D is not online.
Yeah, sorry, I don't know. If it was last night, that would have been a different shift, but I can find out and I can get back to you.
Okay, mahalo.
Yeah, I don't have any details, all right, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any other questions for the Honolulu Police Department, for the board? The public? Anyone online? If not, all right, thank you very much, Lieutenant, appreciate it. All right, so we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on to the Board of Water Supply, is Lorna online?
Yes, I'm here, can you folks hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, hi, good evening. I have the main breaks report for the September. There are two main breaks, one on September first and the other one on the sixteenth, and they're both at Manaloa Avenue. They're six inch and they're nineteen thirty-five types. Announcement I have for this month is really fast one, it's a twenty twenty-five poster and poetry contest. So the Board of Water Supply is launching its twenty twenty-five poster and poetry contest. And it's open to grades K through six. And the poetry contest is open up for seventh graders to twelfth graders. And this year, the theme is Worth of Life. The deadline is enter February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and if you want more information, please visit our website at W W W dot Board of Water Supply dot com slash W C W contest. That's all I have for this month, does anybody have any questions?
Questions for the Board of Water Supply from the board? In person or online? Any questions from the public, the board? All right, if not, thank you very much, Lorna, appreciate it.
Thank you, bye bye.
Okay, so we're gonna loop back, just double check, is anyone from the Honolulu Fire Department on? Okay, apparently not. So we will move on to public input. This is an opportunity for the public to provide any comments that are not listed on the agenda. Those comments may be discussed by the board, but no action may be taken by the board. Are there any public comments this evening, either in person or online? Anyone? That, seeing none, we will move on to community updates. First off, the Kamaki Business and Professional Association is Ivan or two online, or anyone from K B P A? Okay, not seeing anyone, we will move on. Kapilani Community College, Carol Hoshiko emailed me earlier this evening and said that she has nothing to report this month. So we will move on to presentations. The Hawaii Bicycling League and Eric McCutcheon, welcome.
You so much, good evening, everyone. So thank you for being here, we have been talking about micro-mobility, yeah, small types of transportation and mass mobility, rail and bus. We have taken our written exam last month, everyone passed, so that's why you're back. So it is time for the road test, are you ready? We are gonna head outside. Symbolically, all right, anyone seen this guy? The lawn chair on the monowheel in Waikiki. Yeah, he cruises around, you can see right now he's on grass. And basically what I'm gonna have you do is just when you see these photos, just kind of think in your head or yell out loud, like, that should be illegal, or it's just a kid having fun, or is there a law for that? And we'll sort of talk about these, yell about these things, or I'll ramble about this. But it kind of looks like a guy, he's on the grass, right, probably really not doing much harm. Let's look at this next photo. This is from the newspaper a little while back. Oh my goodness, so there's the bike factory back there, this is Alamoana Boulevard. You've got electric bikes, you've got monowheels, we got a four-wheel, the electric skateboard. We've got a bunch of monowheels there. Any thoughts, anyone? Is that okay, okay, dangerous? Well, what's the law? Kinda, the electric bike, definitely plenty of laws, right, they can go twenty miles an hour, up to twenty miles an hour, but they can certainly go faster now. Alamoana Boulevard, street limit is thirty-five miles an hour, correct? Can these, all of these devices go thirty-five miles, that is keep up with the traffic speed? Yes, they can. Pretty much all these devices can easily go thirty-five miles an hour. So, is it right?
But they are a menace when they go on sidewalks, menace to pedestrians.
Okay, but right now what we're seeing is no one on the sidewalk. One guy is crossing the double solid there, probably not a good idea. But it, yeah, I mean, should there be a law, is there a law? It is a little unclear, is it unsafe?
It should have license.
Well, again, the bike for sure, the foot scooter for sure, registration license. Or at least registration. The monowheels, little unclear. Yeah, lots to think about there, you know? Okay, next, next slide. Okay, bunch of segways. Okay? Should there be a law? Should it be allowed? It already is a law, right, they are following the law quite nicely. They are on the sidewalk, I assume they're going about eight miles an hour, that is their max. They're crossing at a crosswalk, very good idea. Most of them wearing helmets, not required, but good idea. Everyone except for the guide wearing a helmet, I don't know about that. But yeah, no problem here, it's totally okay. They should be safe, they should shout out to pedestrians, they should watch their speed, they should be safe like anyone crossing and traveling. But again, it's not, these are not wild people out of control on our streets and sidewalks. Next. Just to help, it's a yellow license plate. Small yellow license plate means, means what kind of device is this person riding? A moped, he is riding a moped, he is getting on the freeway, you can see the H one sign. Is that allowed? Absolutely not, that is against the law here in Hawaii. Is he wearing a helmet? No, does he have high-visibility clothing? Yes, actually somewhat, somewhat blocked by his backpack, footwear, maybe, long pants. So yeah, maybe just lost. Yeah, should we honk at him, should we scare him, should we go road rage on him? You know, he might just be lost, hopefully he'll get off the next thing and then he'll see the sign that says no mopeds before he, that he just passed right there. Next. What's going through your mind, bunch of bikers? Maybe e-bikes, maybe regular bikes, pedal bikes, a lot of them. They're in the bike lane, yeah, clearly demarcated, two-way bike lane. Most of them looks like wearing helmets, a lot of them in reflective, bright colored materials. They're on the walk signal, you can see that, so they seem to be crossing safely. So everything's looking pretty okay. And again, hopefully they will follow the rules of the road, yeah, it looks like they're doing a pretty good job right now. All right, not too many of these around town, but we do have them on Oahu. Meaning exactly what it says, bike only. So if you're one of those riders on your monowheel, on your electric skateboard, on your electric foot scooter, what do you do? Your signage put in for someone's safety. But is it the best thing to do? So they're forced off the street onto a sidewalk? I don't know. So again, we should, I mean, here's signage that we should really kind of think about, is that the best way to protect people on our streets? Next. I like this photo. All right, so again, the small yellow plate, that means that device is a moped, again. Can you have two riders on a moped? No, so it doesn't matter that you're, that he's facing forwards or backwards, you just can't have two. So again, these are, guys are not doing the right thing. Covered footwear, yeah, bright colored clothing, yeah, fully clothed, yeah, so a little, little protection in the clothing there. But Dan stopped at a red, but yeah, no two people, okay, good eyes, everybody, you got them. Any thoughts? We got a three-wheel device, but the plate tells us that's a again, a kind of moped, means its top speed is thirty miles per hour. That means children are basically required to wear helmets if they're in there, but these are adults, so they're choosing not to. Is it freeway legal, can they take this on the freeway? No, because again, top speed thirty miles an hour, right, top speed thirty, so can't go on the freeway. Not this one, that slingshot thing, yes, right, because it's not a moped. All right, good, next. All right, you see these devices? You're driving, you're moving around, you're a pedestrian. I'll tell you, it's a mix, maybe, are there motorcycles or mopeds? One's more powerful than the other, right? A moped, top speed thirty miles an hour, a motorcycle, anything over thirty miles an hour? You as a driver, pedestrian, how powerful are these things if they're coming at you, if you see them on the street? What are they, motorcycles or mopeds? One is closer to that Einahina Library, yeah, one is closer to, let's say, the post office. Now you got the orientation, so decide in your head, mopeds or motorcycles? Next slide. Boom, so that one on the right, white small plate, that's the motorcycle, it was the one closer to the library. Moped, tremendous difference in power, tremendous difference in rideability, how many riders you can have, what the laws are. But very hard to tell the difference until you need to move around them, right? So again, be careful, be careful. Next. What's going on here? Side by side or abreast to what kind of devices? Motorcycles, right, small white plates, two motorcycles riding abreast in one lane, legal in Hawaii? Yes, okay, absolutely legal in Hawaii. Okay, helmeted? Yes, fully clothed? Yes, footwear, maybe, license, safety registration, looks like it, maybe. But yes, that is legal, okay, again, you can't split lanes, that is, you can't drive sort of between cars on the lanes, but you can, you can be two abreast, so again, know what you're doing before you kind of yell at them. Okay, they are, they're doing pretty well on the road right now, good, next. This person even better. What's going on with this person? Lots of good things. License, safety, registration. Helmet, covered shoes. And what's special about the clothing? High visibility, not only that, but especially that backpack, there's, there's something special about it that you could recognize as a driver. It's waterproof, right, so a high-visibility waterproof jacket and a waterproof backpack even. So if it starts to rain, is this person gonna suddenly stop and pull over and jump off the road and get off their bike and create a hazard? No, this person's ready for the weather, yeah, this person's ready to ride, okay, nicely done. Okay, next one. And last one, again, the driver is on the right seat on this car, means what is it? Foreign car, probably from Japan, commonly known as K cars, right? License, registration, safety, we assume the driver's got a driver's license and paid his insurance. All good, but again, did this go through crash test? No, did it go through smog tests? No. It did pass Hawaii's safety, but and it's a right-hand drive in a left-hand world here in Hawaii. Is it something we should have on our roads? I don't know, but it's legal right now, okay? Lots of crazy things going on, and what's the point? Point is be safe, because again, what's the rule for all of us? We all have the right to be safe, our oldest law here on the road. Again, be heads up, you never know what's coming by, thank you.
Thank you very much, Eric, appreciate it, very informative as always. All right, so we're gonna jump back up to the agenda, the Honolulu Fire Department is here.
Good evening, everybody, I'm firefighter hold, ladder five, third watch. Incident statistics for September. Fires, we had one wildland brush fire, and then we had nine activated alarms with no fire. Emergencies, we had thirty-five medicals. And then this month's fire safety tip, smoke alarms, make them work for you. This year, the National Fire Protection Association Fire Prevention Week campaign strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home. For more information and resources, visit F P W dot org. Install, sorry, three tips are install smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area, like a hallway, and on each level of the home. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing the test button, and replace all smoke alarms when they're ten-year-old, ten years old, or stop responding when tested. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, questions?
I have a question, so I believe last night there was an encampment fire under the Kamaki Bridge. Do you guys know anything about it? By I think Kamaki High School.
I did see it.
Yeah, I think there was like an encampment, it was an encampment fire, I'm not sure if you guys recalled. Oh, okay. Okay, mahalo.
Okay, other questions for the Honolulu Fire Department, for the board? In person, online, any questions from the community? If not, thank you very much, thanks for coming down, appreciate it. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the Adopt a Free Tree Program presentation from Dan Danelle. Dan, are you here, I don't think so, or online? Dan? No? Laurie Amada, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here. I asked Dan about it, because I noticed the, he wasn't stated on the presentation, and you know, we talked about it, right, you put him on. And then he told me, well, they're not ready yet, he wanted to present this new flyer that's gonna go out to the community regarding adopted tree in, you know, the, adopt a street tree in front of your house kind of thing. So maybe next month they'll be ready for that.
Okay, no problem, thanks, he's always welcome, so let me know, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to a discussion of the Bus Route Two Hundred on Aloha Avenue. So my understanding is we have representatives from O T S here, oh, D T, I'm sorry, D T S here this evening. Thanks for coming down.
Hi, good evening, I'm Sandra Abale with the Department of Transportation Services, this is Jay Guza, and we also have Eileen Mark there in the corner. And we were invited by this board, Neighborhood Board Four, regarding Bus Route Two Hundred that runs along Aloha Avenue. It was a concern for Neighborhood Board Number Five, and the D T S Director Roger Morton, Deputy Director John Nouchi, and the Transportation Mobility Division Chief Eileen, they all attended Neighborhood Board Board's Neighborhood Board meeting, I think last month, September twelfth, in which some of you were in attention, in attendance. So we're here because you put us on the agenda, so we're here to listen to whatever the board has to say, and Eileen will be taking notes. But one thing, at the Neighborhood Board Five meeting, that board invited our Department D T S to attend a workshop regarding bus service along Aloha with their Transportation Committee. So our director accepted, so we're just waiting for Neighborhood Board Number Five to let us know when that Transportation Committee meeting is gonna be scheduled. So staff are traffic engineering, D T S is traffic engineering, complete streets, and bus operations staff will be in attendance at that workshop to discuss the Route Two Hundred concerns of the residents. So aside from that, we put together frequently asked questions regarding this issue. We have some there, I passed it out to the board. And on it, there's, on the last page, there's our contact information, so other than that, I'll give it to the board.
So thank, thank you very much for coming down, really appreciate you coming out here this evening. So for purposes of the minutes and those online, we will post the the frequently asked questions that were provided to us by D T S on our Google Drive, so that'll be in there. So I will open it up first to any questions from the board, any board members have any questions in person or online? Comments? Okay, if not, oh, oh, yeah, Audrey, go ahead. You can use the microphone, Audrey. Audrey, sorry, can you use the microphone, thank you.
Thank you for the questions and answers, I was just reading it through, and I myself, I know this group came the last meeting, and I'm not sure, would it be helpful if there was like a map or diagram, like, I'm reading it through it, but maybe some kind of visual of where the routes are actually laid out on the, in the city streets? I'm not sure if you have something like that.
I'm sorry, Sandra, can you, can you go up to the microphone, please, thank you.
So if you go to W W W thebus.org, we have all our schedules and routes there, that you can see it. But Jay can give you a description of exactly how the route runs.
So I'm just gonna describe, I'm gonna skip the Palolo side, unless you want me to. I don't know the streets memorized in Palolo, but it loops around kind of by McDonald's, starts by McDonald's, goes all the way to the valley and comes out on, it's Ninth Avenue, Ninth Avenue, and then it comes on Wyly. Goes down by Market City. Turns left onto Kamaki Avenue. It continues on Kamaki Avenue, turns right onto Sixth Avenue. And then from Sixth, it'll turn into Aloha Avenue. Aloha, it'll turn right onto Makapulu, and then onto Diamond Head Road, which will go down towards Kapilani Park. It'll turn right onto Paki Avenue, left onto Kapuhulu Avenue, left onto Kalakau, it'll loop around Kapilani Park until it reaches Paki Avenue again, it'll turn right, and then it'll do the, it'll go the same way it went. So sorry, I'm just throwing all street names out.
Thank you.
But yeah, if you go online at the bus dot org.
Yeah, I did view it, but I thought for purposes of the meeting tonight would have been nice to have it, but yeah. But thank you for refreshing my mind on that, thank you.
All right, any questions, comments from the board members in person or online? Okay, if not, I will open it up to the public comments. Ma'am, could you, could you, ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am, could you come up to the microphone? Or we'll give you a microphone.
Your bus route nine, where it used to go, serviced quite a few people that are no longer being serviced. So could you explain where that nine went prior to your change?
So Route Nine, it traveled from Pearl Harbor. It was between Pearl Harbor and K C C, Kapilani Community College, those are the two endpoints.
So it did go at one time Palolo Valley, because I did go to the website, I did look at your route. And so let me reiterate, it goes Palolo Valley, it goes to and from Pearl Harbor to K C C.
So Palolo Valley is Route Nine S. Route Nine is a, was a totally different.
Different one, right, so the Route Nine S, where did it go prior to the change to Two Hundred?
So Route Nine S only stayed within Palolo Valley.
Okay, we, we understood that that bus or whatever bus route that came through there was going into downtown Kapilani.
No, that would be Route Nine, oh, sorry, that's Route Seven, which took the place of Route Nine. So Route Nine is discontinued right now, there's no Route Nine.
So Route Seven took the place of Route Nine?
Yes.
And Route Seven went through Palolo Valley out and to Pearl Harbor?
Not, not Palolo Valley, but K C C. It stayed on, it went on Wyly, but it didn't go into Palolo Valley.
So there was nothing that went into Palolo Valley except for Nine S?
Correct.
So anybody coming out of Palolo Valley would have to transfer?
Yes.
So right now, what you're, what has happened is nobody, anybody getting on that Route Nine, I mean, the Two Hundred, there's no Nine, so the Two Hundred now goes into Palolo Valley, comes down onto Wyly.
So the 200 now goes into Palolo Valley, comes down onto Wyly, and then comes up to KCC. Going around, okay?
Yes.
So, okay, I just wanna make, I just wanna understand where these things began and, and where, where we left off on, on these routes because, you know, if you ask us, it makes no sense. Okay, thank, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Ma'am, you had a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for coming here and addressing our concerns. I read through your material and, and, uh.
Your records? Yeah, sure. If you don't mind, ma'am, just identifying yourself.
I'm, I'm Anita Liu, and I live on Aloha. And I would just like to say that, uh, the main concern of the residents there are, is the safety issue, which I don't see really addressed in your materials. I mean, we all are, you know, bus riders, supporters, and, you know, having grown up and our children taking the bus, we realize what a great service that is. Uh, however, in terms of Aloha Avenue, you know, we're really concerned because it's already a pretty dangerous street. You know, everybody we go and talk to, we know it's a dangerous street. We live there. And there are concerns that we have expressed, uh, to your director and to the neighborhood boards regarding the blind spots and all of that, the lack of sidewalk, the... So I guess I, my question is, you already have existing, uh, bus stops along parallel streets to Aloha in Kamaki, like Kiloway or Monalua. So why not use those routes? Because there's very little gain in spite of your ridership, you know, for the total route. And, you know, can't disagree with consolidation of routes or, you know, looking at, uh, improving efficiency and so forth. But in terms of the use of, of the bus going along Aloha as to other streets that already, um, are, have buses going along those streets because they have sidewalks and they're level and so forth. Uh, why not use those routes instead of coming to a new street that really, you know, we all, we all were just really frankly, uh, kind of in disbelief that this street, Aloha, would be used as a bus route. And, you know, we, we lived there and so we, we can see the, the ridership incremental. So you, you can't say that, oh, you know, the ridership is thousand people, whatever. The question is, how many people are getting on the buses on Aloha at those four bus stops? And it's very few. You know, I can see empty buses going across my street, uh, every day. And I have never, ever seen a passenger waiting at a bus stop. But those who have, uh, they're coming from other streets and now coming into a sort of an unsafe situation because you're not only having to go in the unpaved street there, but the cross streets are also unpaved. And so, and they're hilly, it's hilly. And then in addition, the lower part of Aloha, there's, there are barriers. There's not, you know, three streets do not go through, cut, cut across. But, you know, it's, there's Upper Street. And so the access to the, uh, Kapahulu side is not all that great either. Plus, it's very steep in terms, you know, if you ever walked. And I, I walked down to my auto repair in Broca or, so they're very steep streets. So for the people who take the bus, uh, the elderly and so forth, or handicapped, it, it, you know, there, there are these, um, geographical barriers that mitigate against Aloha as being a, a really, you know, good street to, to have a bus, bus route. So I guess what we're, we're concerned about, why we're, we're, you know, really objecting to this is that there are alternative streets that provide safer access to the riders and also, um, uh, you know, have been in existence already. So why, you know, have, have it in, in, and make our street more unsafe, our neighborhood more dangerous? That's what we're really concerned about. Yeah.
Eileen took, Eileen took all the notes on your concern. We'll take it back to our administration. But, um, the FAQ is to not address your safety concerns because we're gonna be, um, attending that workshop with the Neighborhood Board Five, um, Transportation Committee. So that's when we were going to discuss it, when we'll have all the, like I said, the traffic engineering, um, staff there, the complete street staff, bus operations staff. So all of the DTS staff will be there to address and discuss the, um, transportation, the Neighborhood Board's Transportation Committee concerns.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Neighborhood Board Five Chair to let us know when it's scheduled.
Are we, will we be invited?
Well, I, I have to ask the Neighborhood Board Chair. I'm assuming.
Okay. We will.
Yes, it should be pursuant to the sunshine law. That's correct.
Okay. And another thing about ridership is if you're gonna look at ridership, and now people have to transfer because I spoke to bus riders and they're kind of upset, those who have taken Route Seven and Nine or whatever, now they have to transfer. And so you count them as two riders instead of one. So, you know, it may look like your ridership is increasing or whatever, but actually, you know, it may be a, um, you know, double counting. So, you know, I think those are our concerns. How much more ridership are you gonna get by having the buses going on Aloha? I think very few, very few indeed. I mean, if you were to look at ridership, you know, you can't look at the whole, you have to look at the incremental riders that are going to be, um, boarding the buses on Aloha. And if it's bus riders who are from other, uh, who would, would have taken the bus on Kiloway or Monalua, instead you're now having coming, coming down to a more unsafe street, then, uh, you know, that's not really adding much to the ridership, but adding a lot of danger to those of us who live in the community.
All right. Uh, any further questions, comments from the community here? Okay, we have someone online? Daisy, Daisy, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, has anyone else besides John, Deputy Director John Nouchi from DTS ever taken the Route 200 from beginning to end? I've taken it several times. And unfortunately, the only time you have passengers is people getting on and off at, to go to Palolo Valley, since that's the only bus that services that needed route. Just like the other valleys, no other bus will go, like Number Seven goes to Kalie Valley, St. Louis Heights has their own, um, Monalua Heights, et cetera. I suggest you both do follow and see what the concerns are on Aloha Avenue. As you notice, um, if I'm in Kamaki on Wyly Avenue and I catch Route 200, I can get to my house on Monster Rock near KCC in three to 10 minutes. That shows you what kind of ridership you have, very few. The only one you really have is people going in and out of Palolo Valley, since that's the only bus that services them. The other thing is, if you really look, you notice that Kamaki Avenue going up from, uh, Market City is steep, and you have to go around that roundabout thing. Just was the traffic coming that, um, customer, the late customer took Bena installed it. But unfortunately, you know, it's a safety concern. Sixth Avenue has sidewalks on both sides. Once you get to Aloha, there's sidewalk on one side, which is on the Makai side. Makai side, closer to KCC side, there's no sidewalk. And I've seen people, I've seen only four students get off at KCC, which is behind the, um, Diamond Head Theater. Unfortunately, there's no marked crosswalk. They had to walk two blocks to get to KCC. So I don't see where the, the students are safe in that particular area, especially at night. Trying to traverse that area is very dangerous. Well, if you notice, people that are trying to catch the bus, guess what? They have to stand in the street. How dangerous is that? A person in a wheelchair? We've had pictures from the residents that have shown there's a person getting in and out of the bus that's on the wheelchair and ends up not on the sidewalk, but on the street. So that particular area does not make sense. I suggest to DTS Director Morton that you go back to the Palolo Valley bus the way that it was, then more ridership will increase and not be a safety hazard for all the other side streets. It makes no sense because I have no idea, unless there's somebody high up in DTS or the city that wants the route there. It makes no sense. Many years ago, former Director, um, Paul Wan had a, um, traffic light installed on Pahoa and Sixth Avenue to the vehicles traverse in and out of their own driveways safely. I hope this is not the same case, but, you know, you have to think of people that are really the danger of, have you ever gone around to Aloha from Sixth Avenue? It's a round line curve and people speed there. So you need to really be careful. And I, this is a very wrong route. I should go back to the original because I don't know who's thinking that was. It was similar to what the, um, bicycle plan was years ago. But I think that you need to really go back and see because this is not really a safe spot for anyone. And on top of that, your own Vision Zero booklet says, save transit for all. Guess what? This is violating it. So you need to really go back in and I appreciate people that have stood up because it's not, it's not fun to see somebody get hurt. And somebody will get hurt because of the way the unsafeness of the route is. I'm not talking about Palolo Valley that they're needed. I'm talking about from Wyly Avenue to going around, um, Elf Club all the way through there. So you need to rethink that and put the 20 back on and go around to Elf Club because otherwise this route makes no sense. A lot of people are not taking that bus. Thank you.
All right, we're gonna have to move on. So you, before you, before you go on, may I just ask if anybody else has any comments, either online or in person? Okay, all right. So last comment. Go ahead.
Can I make just one comment to?
Yes, sure. Absolutely.
Just to let you know that, yes, Deputy Director John Nouchi, um, does, did ride Route 200. And in fact, he is, um, a regular bus rider. So just to let, you know, on all different routes. Well, he's, he rode it already. He rode that one too.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're gonna have to move on to the last comment, please.
I'll, I'll be short. So anyway, a number of parents have said that their kids used to take the bus to Kalani, like my son. But now they cannot have a direct route. So in order to get to school on time at eight or whatever, they have to take the 6:30 bus. So many parents now are driving their kids to Kalani, which is like counter, you know, your, your goals. Anyway, that just thought I'd let you know.
All right. So thank you very much for all the comments and questions. And thank you very much, Sandra J., Eileen, for coming out. We really appreciate it. Um, so we will, I will double check with the, uh, Neighborhood Board Number Five Chair, but, um, that workshop should be open to the public because it is required by the sunshine law. So, but we'll confirm with that. And I, I encourage everyone to monitor, obviously, the Neighborhood Board Number Five's, uh, plans on the workshop because it sounds like a good, good opportunity to get some additional information and provide more info. All right? I'm sorry.
Um, to, to further make a comment on that, when the, when the agenda is posted for that, uh, Transportation Committee, it will be posted on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. So if you go to honolulu.gov slash NCO, we'll have a calendar on our website and it'll, the agenda will be posted there of the date, time, and the location over the meeting will be for those that wish to participate. And to clarify, it is open to the public. Anybody from any community can join.
Right. Thanks very much, Jeffrey. Thanks for that clarification. Thanks again, everybody, for the comments on that. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the discussion and consideration of the resolution urging the legislature to adopt good government reforms. Um, I, I did review the, uh, there is a revised, uh, uh, resolution, I believe, that's being proposed. I am gonna recuse myself once again from consideration of that, uh, resolution and this agenda item. So I've been going to turn it over to, uh, James Loeb. I'm gonna turn over the gavel to him to address this agenda item. Thanks, James.
Online either. Or he is not online, unless she has another rep that's sharing with her, but I'll see her online.
Hi, Aloha.
Oh, Aloha.
Hi, my name is Aria. I, um, am representing, I'm working with Maria on this, so I can answer any questions.
Okay. Did you wanna discuss any of the, um, changes that were made in the resolution since last time?
Sure.
Or do you want just questions?
Uh, yeah, I can just speak really briefly on it. So hi, everyone. My name is Aria Juliet Castillo. I'm working with Maria with Hapa, Common Cause, R Hawaii, um, on this resolution of good governance. I did watch the previous meeting, so I am aware of the concerns that were brought up about the statutory line items. And, um, similar resolutions are going through the other neighborhood board. And in Moa as well, they had some concerns about the statutory line items. So those were removed. And so this, uh, version of the draft of the resolution just addresses the rules changes at the legislature. And the one that's working through the Manoa Neighborhood Board is similar to that as well. Um, there are changes. Um, I think that one of the new rules that we're proposing is to have bills introduced by request, must include the sure of the entity that is making the request, um, enact term limits on chairs and leadership positions, and then amendments to bills must be in written form before the amended version of the bill can be voted on. And, um, like Maria said in last meeting, this resolution is really meant to express the board's concerns, the neighborhood's concerns, that we want to make sure that the government is working for the people. Um, so if there's a rule change in here, a line item that doesn't resonate with this particular board, totally happy to take it out, um, in favor of passing the other suggestions on to the state legislature. We wanna do this before 2025 session starts, so they can start off on a good foot. Thank you.
Okay. And then, uh, are there any, uh, questions or comments from the board? Go ahead.
See, I'm gonna be recusing, recusing myself as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
So two. Any board members with any questions, concerns? Yeah, Becky, go ahead.
Hi, um, no questions, no concerns. I just wanted to express my support. Um, and I, I noted, um, when our chair asked for, um, items for this agenda that, um, I no longer felt that I needed to recuse myself. And I have also, um, deregistered as a lobbyist. So I don't feel like I have a conflict of interest with this new language as it relates to the specific internal rules, um, of the chambers at the Capitol. And in reviewing it, I just wanted to echo some of my experience. Um, I think you guys know I've been representing mental health professional organizations, social workers, psychologists, therapists. Um, so I probably submitted maybe like 50, 60 pieces of testimony this last legislative session. And at least three times I noticed that my testimony, even though I got verification through the portal at the Capitol that it was filed, at least three times I didn't see it in the testimony that was actually posted. Uh, you know, I've, I've been wanting to go complain about it, but it's just like, I can't remember which bill, you know, what it is. So, I mean, I just wanted to share that for Aria and your advocacy. That was my experience. Like, there's glitches. I've heard from other people, there's glitches. And, um, you know, I put a lot of work into my testimony. So it was really frustrating to hear that it wasn't before the legislators. Um, so there needs to be some mechanical fixes or something. Um, and I think that the proposal in this bill just helps to improve the transparency and maybe elongate the time. So stuff doesn't fall through the cracks, craps, cracks. I didn't say crap, did I? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Bye.
Okay, thank you. I guess I should ask, uh, so two folks are recusing themselves. Will we have quorum if some emotions?
No. We have seven present. The quorum vote is six.
Ah, I see, I see. So, uh, are there any other comments, questions, discussions on this topic? So I guess at this time, yeah, we just have to defer it to the next meeting or, yeah, defer it to the next meeting? Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, James. Thank you. All right. Uh, so, uh, the item is deferred. Uh, we will have it again on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, so we'll move on to the Kamaki District Park Pickleball, Pickleball Court Lines and Layout Agenda Item. Is Stacy Rivera here? Hi, Stacy. You have the floor.
Uh, Stacy Rivera. And, uh,
Stacy Rivera, and I'd like to thank Ken and Mr. Board for allowing us time to just give our our input about what we think about the courts. Appreciate it. For the Kamaki Community Park, which is like just a little bit down the road, uh, we play there pretty often and a lot of people actually play there pretty often, like so many people that came to help support. Um, my, my thing was the, I would like to ask if it's any way possible to reconfigure the pickleball court of the way it's situated on the courts right now. Um, because, because right now they run perpendicular to the basketball courts, which is not a very good scenario for the pickleballs rolling into the courts. And um, or for the basketballs rolling to the backside of the pickleball players. So uh, I'd like to ask, I'm not sure where we're supposed to get the okay's for these things or how it goes along. But right now this is kind of what it looks like. So the basketball courts are on the top side here across this suite. And the pickleball courts, not the, not the block runs this way. So the pickleballs all roll the basketball courts. But what we're asking is if they could change the configuration to be the other way. So it runs parallel to the basketball courts. That way we could actually do a lot of things. It would do alleviate a lot of things. For one, it would add, it could possibly add another one or two pickleball courts. And um, so that it would make it easier for us. Right now, the picture was there the other night. And um, so like when they're, when they're hitting, they're hitting that way and this way. But when they're hitting this way, like what they did, they just did this one. This is where the, this is where the pickleball ends up, right into the feet of basketball courts. Because and, and we yell, and like very annoying. A lot of times we can get there, uh, because we're not that far away from them. But uh, so that we can stop them from bringing people to stop and return the ball to us. Um, vice versa, because basketballs come rolling back. And so we're like facing this way, hitting this way. And if the basketball is rolling behind of us, we can't see it because we're facing backside. So we don't want to trip over it, step on it or whatever. Um, then it also, like another thing, on the other side, the basketball court, there's steps to get up from the Wythe Avenue, Tenth Avenue, uh, to the court and which is this gate area right here. And um, it, there's stairs that go down there. Right now, this is a nighttime picture. So my, my flash took a little bit darker, I mean brighter, but it's kind of dark. And um, when it gets a little bit darker, I do run down the stairs because the pickleballs are facing that way. I mean, that's one of the areas it's going to. Um, like I'm sixty one already and we have a lot of people that go there. I don't, I mean, we'd rather not have to go up and down the steps to try to get there.
I apologize. You can come closer to the mic.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah. Sorry, sorry. Uh, yeah. So, um, because I do it, we've been doing it for a long time, but for the long duration that there's more people coming out now. So there'll be more people going up and down this, even at the daytime, just to go up and down the steps to get to run after the people to bring it back. It just might be a little bit, if we turn it the other way, instead of going this way towards the stairs, it'll go that way. So at least we'll be, yeah, stopping it ourselves or be ourselves. But um, I gotta make sure. I've never done this before. Um. So there's one more point that it would help to, um, to change, to change that, the, the direction of the courts. If there's an entrance. This gate comes from the, sorry, I never showed you guys. This gate is the e- exit from the Happy Days, this one right here. And everybody in the nighttime is coming out of there and they can pay there now. So when you're coming out of there, we're facing this way from the, from the exit. And there's, and the, they're in their cars trying to pay with their highlights beaming or their lights beaming up because they're above us and shining down on us. We're like, okay, wait, we have to wait. Okay, no, we can't go. And uh, we're waiting until they finish. But a lot of them take a long time because I don't think it's easy to do that. Because it's not easy to do that, there's the line builds up. So we're waiting for that guy to leave. And then here comes the next guy and then the next guy. And then sometimes like four cars. So we have to stand there. We wait for like minutes. And minutes are a long time when you're playing a game. Um, and, and then, you know, people are waiting and, and stuff. But that's, that would be the third thing. Just by turning the courts the other direction. And um, that would alleviate those three major things. The, the reason why I'm bringing it up now is because I have, I'm assuming that eventually Kamaki has to be on the agenda, agenda to resurface the courts. Because I think we're one of the only ones in a long time that hasn't been resurfaced. Um, and there's little, little cracks already starting on top of the court. So we're, I'm asking now so that when it actually becomes Kamaki's turn to, to, to resurface, then this is already in the books. And it's not like, oh, what are we gonna do? Let's just do what we did already. And then we go, no, no, please, can you try it? It'll be too late by then. So if we brought it up now, then maybe they can plan it already to do it that way. Because it really wouldn't cost more money to change it. The other way maybe for a little bit more paint because now you can add on another court. And so they have to, um, they have to paint it anyway, uh, for another court. Um, but um, so that's why I'm asking to, to do it right now. Um. And then, uh, another thing about, um, the, the courts for the pickleball courts, if we could add another court, um, if you do the simple math of how much people actually can utilize a court. Of course, this is every second of the, of the day. If you, if you add on one more court, um, for each game takes approximately fifteen minutes. So if you add one court from say eight to ten, the courts are open, then you can potentially have sixty, fifty-six games throughout that one day on one court. So that would allow four people per game, which would allow two hundred and twenty-four people to play for that one court for that one day. And you do the math, seven days a week would be like over fifteen hundred people could actually get use out of that. And the only difference would be is to turn it. And, and, and that would be, that would be a huge difference. And I know that if you turn it, that it would, it would be making the courts go tandem. I don't know if anybody plays pickleball here. But it would make it go tandem. And we understand that. But I spoke to the Oahu Pickleball Associate President. And she said that if there wasn't, uh, if it was possible that they could help subsidize the cost to put like how they did it, Kehi the Goom, to put a fence in between so that the balls wouldn't go back to the pickleball people. Um, and so that would be covered in this way. And then the more, more or less chance of it going to the basketball court. So that's, I mean, can't help things fly all over the place, but I mean, it'll minimize it uh, a, a lot to, um, to try to, try to, try to get that to happen. And one more thing that would be really good uh, for to, just to do that one turning, um, is that I spoke to a lot of businesses that are around the area. And I, I let them know what's gonna happen if you add one more court. Like I said, how much people that it would actually end up, could potentially come out there. And um, we all go to visit all of those businesses. And if I didn't play at Kamaki, uh, I wouldn't go there. I wouldn't give them my money. I wouldn't support their business, not because I don't like them, but because I'm not there. But because we're waiting and, you know, hanging out with everybody that's over there, then we go over to Magoo's, to Seven Eleven, to Superfall. And we spent a lot of money supporting those businesses around. They, they like the idea that if we did that and more people could come out, then everybody's a win-win situation. I mean, that's pretty much what.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for the information, the suggestion. So, um, if you don't mind, could you email me those pictures? Those pictures? Yeah. And, and, uh, yes. And we do have the city's representative online and, um, so, you know, hopefully, um, he can find out who the appropriate agency might be to, you know, address this. Yeah. Address it. Right, right, right. So any, any questions? Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Okay.
I have a quick question. I, maybe it's silly, but is that exclusive, exclusively used for pickleball, that section?
No.
That you're at?
No, that's not about it. That's why if we, if we were to turn it and uh, you could still leave a volleyball court on the last court. Because we, we've been playing there for the past couple of years.
So throughout the day, there sometimes is volleyball there or other sports going on?
There's basketball.
Yeah.
And then there's very.
Yeah, basketball, but in that, in that pickleball area. Is that?
There's, there's a very rarely, but once in a great while, well, a group that comes to play, they have volleyball. But they, they only use one court. In the past couple of years, it's only been like, they've only used one court. And then that's why I said if you kept the, the poles there, then they could still, still, still play, still, yeah, have their volleyball games.
So I, I don't, I haven't played pickleball yet, but um, I used to play tennis and racquetball. And I know that uh, racket sports is very good for your health mentally and physically, especially when you get older. The thing is, the pickleball courts, I think, I don't know how many years ago were put on, are overlaid over older basketball courts. Multiple, I mean, not basketball, but volleyball courts. But it's kind of crazy to think that people are playing volleyball on concrete surface. It's not even safe. And hardly ever see, I, I might have seen like one volleyball game over all these years. So I do support more pickleball courts and the general, I don't, I don't know if you can squeeze in six, you know, with like just a few feet between, you know, in the tent though. But uh, you would, I would imagine you would have to resolve some issues with maybe very few volleyball players. Um, but if you cannot accommodate one court, maybe that would be enough. Because right now it is, is it three?
There's four courts.
So I mean, four pickleball courts overlay three volleyball.
Yeah. And then one of the, one of the four is a strictly pickleball.
Yeah. Okay. So, yeah. So there is another community, but yeah, I haven't seen the volleyball players. And this is, you know, concrete. I mean, you cannot go diving and try to, you know, for, for that. So anyway, I, I know people who play here on the weekends. When I walk by, I say hi to them. Yeah. Eventually, maybe I'll play pickleball too.
Well, I set up every Tuesday, Thursday nights, five to ten, and we let everybody play. Anybody that comes along and wants to play is more than welcome to play. So we, we, but the whole committee goes walking around there to come out and play.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Uh, so we're gonna have to move on. Any last question?
Hi, this is Poa. Um, I'm board member Poa. Um, I wanted to ask, you guys don't share it with tennis, right?
No.
It's only volleyball.
Strictly volleyball.
So I know that, um, in our district, in my district, because I work for councilmembers here, um, we have people chalk the chalk, chalk it. So I don't know if you guys can do that temporarily, where you guys can actually shift it. Is that something, you're shaking your head like, no, it can't be done? So.
No, 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 no. We, we could. We
Yeah.
Possibly like maybe, but it's not gonna last. And I've heard, I've heard before, I haven't been playing pickleball all that long.
Yeah.
But I've heard that it damaged, if you tape it, it can damage the court. We don't want to damage the court anymore than what it is. I mean, I guess if you chalked it, but it's very hard to get on the ground.
Yeah.
Try to lay out a chalk line of forty feet this way.
I wanna say, because I'm across Kapaluna Park. I live right across there. And I see them set up pickleball in the basketball and in the tennis courts. And they're marking with some kind of tape or something sometime. So that's damaging, you're saying?
Well, I understand this is already gonna damage it.
Yeah.
Damage.
So they bring the short nets. I just saw it last night and then they tape it.
Yeah, but it can, but I don't want to be responsible to, uh, to damage the course there because I like, I want to still use it. And I, I'm only proposing this for when you actually resurface. So it would have to be painted again anyway. So I want to try to make it in the works now that, hey, let's propose this. And say, when we do actually do the resurfacing, then here, here, this is the layout we're gonna use. And it's not like, oh, we, no, we're just gonna do it this way. We're gonna put exactly what it was. Because I think that's what they did with all the other courts that they resurfaced. They did put it back exactly what it was because no one proposed to change it to anything else. So if we, if I do it now and they do it, it's, I don't know, is there a way for us to find out when they're gonna resurface?
You would have to propose, um, something. You'd have to have an, um, have it advertised and actually do a resolution to have a resurface done.
Well, it's not like on a schedule. I, the good thing I came here, I've been always thought we're, we're just waiting our turn.
Right, yeah.
Because a lot of courts got resurfaced twice.
Yeah.
And then we never got resurfaced.
And then also the thing too is at the Alamoana, um, tennis courts.
Yeah.
They do play pickleball there. I know that you guys have heard a lot about the Alamoana um, beach park being used as a big pickleball place. And it's only like one area, like one court. They only have one court.
The practice.
So, yeah, so they, they chalk it. And it's okay to chalk on the, on, on the, um, the field. Yes, that in the practice field. But in the other field, yeah, if they wanted to do another field, like if you wanted to use another tennis court because it's public, you can chalk, you can chalk, you can use like kids chalk and re-chalk it anytime. So when this, when the rain comes, it's, you're not gonna damage the court. Um, and that way you guys can switch it the way you guys need to until the resurfacing is done. Because most likely the resurfacing is gonna take a while. So if it's gonna be convenient, you guys can chalk it up.
Oh, yeah. Oh, so, but then I would have to, um, well, we can't right now because there's volleyball pools. Because there's three courts of volleyball that's not being used. Only one maybe once in a while.
Yeah.
But if we do that, then I guess we.
It'll be a temporary fix.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But at least it'll be a way where you guys don't have the lights in your face.
Right.
You know, it'll be a temporary fix where you guys can change it the other way.
Yeah, yeah.
That can be done right away. You guys can do that yourselves.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna have to really move on here. So, um, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one last comment from Becky. Becky, I know you have your hand up. So go ahead. You have the last word.
Super quick. Um, this pickleball discussion is kind of familiar. I remember maybe in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, we had a resolution in this Neighborhood Board. The room was packed with people. There was a tennis, you know, um, pickleball sort of like battle going on. But I'm pretty sure we passed a resolution. And if you go back to those days, maybe this resolution will help serve. Because I remember there was a debate about, um, the lines and stuff like that. Um, so maybe if you can maybe work with the Neighborhood Board Commission and, um, maybe find the archives of this resolution. That could help, help you perhaps. And the other thing I wanted to say is, oh, I wanted to ask, what did you say Tuesday? I used to play tennis like a theme.
Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday at five. And then if you don't have a racket, do you provide them?
Uh, no, my, I, I provide the nets and the balls.
Okay, so.
If you cover the racket, yeah. But then, you know, you could maybe ask, you can get one for twenty dollars.
Find a friend with a racket. People carry two rackets, right? That's kind of common.
Sometimes, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Okay. Okay. Goodbye. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks for that. All right. So we're gonna move on to elected officials reports. Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Mark Wong. Mark, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, not sure, are, am I able to share a screen?
Yes, you are.
Okay, let's see if this works. I don't know. I think my computer may not allow it. It looks like, looks like the security set this so I can do it. Um. Okay. Well, I'm just gonna paste in the, um, some, the summary from the mayor's newsletter, um, so that those of you that are online can get this address here. So I'm gonna start with, um, the summary of the mayor's newsletter, um, for this month. It is posted on the city's website on the mayor's page under newsletter. And the topics this month are an update on operations and ongoing construction for the rail system. Uh, with the next segment opening in late twenty twenty-five. City has also unveiled the Ala Respite, which is across from Ala Park. It's the city's newest facility aimed at addressing homelessness. Um, in nearby, the Honolulu Medical Examiner has upgraded their facility and also hired a new deputy um, medical examiner. Um, in, um, on the beaches, the city has opened a new lifeguard tower. And in Waikiki Shell, they're undergoing renovations there. Um, and some information about when the facility is gonna reopen to the public. And finally, there's an article about the Broadway and Hawaii season for twenty twenty-five and the three Broadway shows that will be appearing there. So all of that is in the mayor's newsletter. You can get all the past newsletters at the same site and you can sign up for delivery of the newsletter. Um, next I'm moving, going to address, uh, some of the concerns. Actually, the only, the only, uh, concern that I have, um, an answer for is the question about fire safety and wildfire risks on Maumai. And the fire department reported that they have issued a, um, a plan for a fire break there and they're going to be working with DPR to implement that. And, uh, regarding this discussion about modifying the pickleball courts, uh, the department that you want to, uh, approach for this is D. The department that you want to uh, approach for this is DPR. So the Department of Parks and Recreation. Um, manages that facility. I would uh, forward them that map. Um, I'm not there, so if you can give that to the board chair, he can make sure that, that gets to DPR. And then when I speak to the director, I will um, I will mention that. I also spoke to a director of DTS today, Roger Morton. And he said that uh, they are open to moving the bus stops. Um, addressing the speed of the, not only the buses, but the traffic on Aloha. So um, as was mentioned in tonight's meeting, uh, he encourages the Kamaki neighborhood board to join the Diamond Head Board. For a discussion, kind of a workshop about what could be done and uh, certainly that date will be shared with you. Uh, that concludes my report, but I will take back any new questions to the administration if there are any.
All right, thank you very much, Mark. Uh, any questions for uh, Mark Wong, the mayor's representative from the board? Comments? Questions, comments from the public? All right, if not, thanks very much, Mark. Thanks for all the information. Appreciate it.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, Lori, Lori Amada.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Lori Amada. Um, in regards to Maumai Nature Park, yeah, and.
Yes.
DPR and HFD.
Yes.
Together, is that a done deal? They're gonna be doing something? Because we've been going around passing out letters to the residents who live right next to the uh. Uh, foliage, yeah, that could be a danger to their houses if there's a wildfire. So I'm wondering, you know, we did, uh, Amanda did do two risers. So we haven't heard back from the second riser. It was a follow-up of the first one asking for.
Yeah, so, so what they have determined that uh, there needs to be a thirty-foot fire break between the overgrown vegetation and nearby houses. And they're working, working with DPR in order to obtain compliance with the fire code. Then DPR responded that they are in contact with HFD inspector and on September twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, HFD explained the fire prevention safety protocol um. With more details, uh, DPR is now under discussion for options to comply with the fire code. So this is uh, it is a requirement, they will be. They must address this. I don't have a timeframe, but it will be, it will be taken care of.
Okay, because it is city and county's duty to make sure this is done, yeah?
That's correct. And more specifically, it's DPR's responsibility.
Yes, yes. Very good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, Becky Gardner, Becky?
Hi, just real quick, um, I heard a story on the radio today talking about fire in California, Oakland, California. And um, I don't know, they were, they were talking to the officials that they, after this big fire in nineteen ninety-one, I think it was, or ninety-three. I guess the city of Oakland just overhauled their way of managing the, the land. And they said they got goats to eat at the dry grass and, and stuff like that. But the, the whole point of the story was on NPR, HPR, or NPR Today, um, about the. Tunnel Campfire in Oakland, California. So Oakland in particular, um, I guess they're just really proud of their prevention efforts. So I just wanted to raise that because it just came up today and maybe they have models you guys can look at. That's all.
I'll pass that along.
All right, thanks, Becky. Okay, so we're gonna move on. Thank you very much, Mark. Appreciate it. Thanks for the updates. Okay, so we will move on to councilmember Tommy Waters' office. Is councilmember Waters or his representative online?
Hello, Chair, I'm here.
Hello, Chair. Go ahead.
Hello, everybody. So thank you, Mark, for the update. My office has been working with the community on, on trying to get the fire department and our Department of. Parks and Recreation to cut back the, the, the brush along Paula Drive. So Amanda and I last Friday, along with Lori, walked door to door handing out Firewise um, letters. To residents and we're gonna do it again this coming Friday if anybody else wants to join us. Um, to try to hit as many people as we can. I guess my concern was there was no timeline from Parks Department on when it would be done. So we'll continue to keep some pressure on them to try to get it done as soon as possible. Fact of the matter is, the brush in many areas is really, really thick and it's gonna need a chainsaw. You can't just do it with a weed eater. Next thing I wanted to talk about, um, the primary urban core development plan. So as many of you know, Honolulu has a general plan, which is for the island of Oahu. And in the general plan, there are two areas that are identified for future growth. One is the EVA area and the second is the primary urban core. So the primary urban core runs from Kahala all the way to Mililani. So we are, we are on the east end of the primary urban core. There has been a push to build more affordable housing. And the idea is to put it in the urban core so people don't have to drive from um. Outer areas of, of the island. There's also been a push to allow for housing above commercial spaces. Yeah, so how does that relate to us? For those of you who live on Mauna, Mauna Lani area, Wilhelmina Rise area. Well, that could mean that there could be buildings above Kahala Mall. Just like there are in Alamoana Shopping Center. There could be buildings above Foodland, the Foodland area that was just built right by the Kahala Towers. Time supermarket, right, in, in Kahala area and then that Petland area. Um, over by Wilson Elementary. That would affect everybody's view who lives on Mauna Lani, right? So in the primary urban core development plan, it actually talks about allowing these buildings in these areas. So based on what I know from walking door to door and coming to your meetings, that people don't want that. So I submit amendments to the primary urban core for these areas. To downgrade it from allowing high-rise buildings to only allowing three stories max. So that's gonna be um, before the council this coming Tuesday. So I'm working closely with councilmember Kia Aina. She's the vice chair of the council and she's the zoning. Committee chair and I'm gonna do my best to convince her that we don't want high-rises in these areas. Again, it, it's gonna affect the view, uh, view cone, right, of the ocean and of Diamond Head. The other thing as it relates to Kamaki. So there, within the current. Um, primary urban core. By the way, how it started was. The, the TPP, the administration, um, proposes it to the planning commission. The planning commission. Um, makes amendments or changes as they see fit and then it comes to the council. I made all of these recommendations to the planning commission and they didn't adopt them. But ultimately, the council gets the final say. So as it relates to Waili Avenue, again, this is a commercial areas. There could be. Um, and what the plan currently says is that you could have eight or nine-story buildings all along Waili Avenue. In fact, it would be allowed from the freeway. On the Makai side of Waili Avenue to Keanu Street going into Palolo, eight or nine-story buildings. So I'm trying to amend the plan to say, no, 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 we don't want that. We wanna keep it Kamaki. So if you notice with the Civil Beat Plaza and where Central Pacific Bank is, it's four stories. But what I'm suggesting is only allowing for two to three stories. Um, so these amendments are gonna be before the zoning committee this Tuesday. So if you get a chance to log on and opine on this, I could sure use your support. If you believe as I do, that we don't want those types of large buildings in our neighborhoods. Um, the other thing I wanted to talk to you folks about is Bill Forty-Six that I introduced along with Budget Chair Cordero. Creating a empty homes tax, empty homes tax. Little bit controversial, but I want to tell you why I proposed it. The median price of a home in Honolulu is one point one million dollars. We have the highest rent in the entire country according to the University of Hawaii Research Economics Research Office. Highest rents in the entire country. In twenty twenty-two, there was an outmigration of sixty-seven thousand people. Sixty-seven thousand people. Now, there's a migration of fifty thousand, so what's been reported in the news is that, hey, it's only fifteen to seventeen thousand net. Fact of the matter is sixty-seven thousand of our residents, you know, have left. So I'm trying to get creative, yeah? The council, since I've been on, we've approved about over eight thousand affordable units. But the Department of Business and Economic Development has determined that we need to build. Twenty-five thousand new units in order to catch up, right? The idea is to build more units, which would hopefully bring the price down. Fact of the matter is, we can't build our way out of this. The latest census said that the state has thirty-four thousand vacant units statewide. Eighteen thousand of them are on the island of Oahu. So how do we incentivize people to rent these homes out or sell them to local residents? Right, how do we get them to do that? Well, what we're proposing is a higher tax if you're gonna leave your home vacant. But if you rent it out, you don't have to pay that tax. We put about fifteen different exemptions to try to take care of local people. Just as an example, one, if you rent it out, you don't have to pay the tax. If you're a caregiver for um, a family member and you have to stay with that family member in their house. That tax won't apply to you. Um, if you're in the military, it doesn't apply to you. But it is kind of controversial because it would be, at this point, the way it's written, an additional one percent the first year, two percent the second year, and three percent the third year. What we've been learning through our hearings is that there's apparently a lot of people with second homes, especially beach homes. And it's local people who save their home li, life to, to go and buy that. We don't want to affect them. Really, what I'm, I'm looking at is the mainland outside foreign investors. Who buy property here because our property tax rates are amongst the lowest in the country. I wanted to try to encourage these folks, again, to either rent it out or sell it to local folks. This is coming up uh, on November eighth. We're gonna have an informational briefing on this. It's gonna be a tough one to, to, to pass. I'm not sure if we actually have the votes on this. But um, if you're interested, please participate on November eighth. The last thing I wanted to talk about, um, which is kind of controversial, I'm curious for, for you folks to weigh in on. City Council is currently um, weighing whether or not we should approve the settlement. Of the spouse of the, the African rugby player who was shot and killed by the police department. Um, in the course of their duty. Corporation Council, the city's attorneys have suggested that we settle at one point five million dollars. And the police department, the prosecutor, even the mayor came out and said, don't settle. We were listening to the facts. We're concerned about the liability of the city if we were to lose. Because the attorneys are asking for over five million dollars. But we're undecided. We're not sure what to do. Um, one of my concerns also is for the actual police officers. They're sued personally. So if, if the city loses, they could be personally on the hook and it would affect their credit as well. But anyway, the ci, the city council put off the vote until next month. Um, I've gotten quite a bit of emails saying do not settle. But I'll put it up to you folks for discussion. Um, but, you know, I noticed you only gave me three minutes. So I, I wanna be respectful of that and I'm available for questions.
All right, thank you very much, Chair Waters. Appreciate it. Any questions for Chair Waters from the board? Or the public? All right.
Me, 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 sorry.
All right, Lori, go ahead.
I'd like to thank Tommy and Amanda for helping out envision Kamaki and, and passing out these letters. And your support from the city in our causes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lori.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Lori. Okay. No other comments? Thank, oh, go ahead.
Tommy, is uh, is the Alawai Golf Course safe from uh, development down the, in the coming decades? Um, it's probably safer from development than it is from the other side. They may want to take it away and turn it back, tuck it into a central park. Um, what, what is your take on the future of the Alawai Golf Course property?
Oh, thank you for the question. At this point, there are no plans whatsoever to redevelop. Alawai Golf Course. It was interesting, some developer was putting up commercials, talking about creating a cultural park and whatnot. To me, that was, who knows who these people are, where they're coming from, but the city.
I know who they are.
Any plans? I think they're just trying to stir up some support for it, but at this point, you know, that was one of the. If not the most played golf course in the country, right? It's not anymore, but it was. And I, I support the golfers, so I'll, as long as I'm on the council, it's gonna stay a golf course.
One last comment, the, the people that proposed that, they had these late-night commercials for the botanical garden. And they had a frontman that attended a lot of meetings. Uh, he was the frontman of a. Probably a, a very wealthy forestry corporation in Korea with a history of building. Botanical gardens and other forestry uh, projects. And that's, that's what's behind those uh, those things.
Oh, thank you. I didn't know that.
All right, thanks Franklin. Okay, we're gonna have to move on. So thank you very much, Chair Waters. Appreciate all the updates and information. Okay. So we will move on to councilmember Sei's office.
Okay, if I said.
Hey, Brian.
Oh, and councilmember Sei is here.
I'm here, but uh, I'll defer to Poa to give the report, but Tommy gave an excellent uh, report as far as what the council is doing. But uh, go right ahead, Poa.
Okay, mahalo, boss. Um, so the report tonight is that we have an announcement from Mauna, Mauna Lani Community Park. Nate Sirota announced, Nate Sirota from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Announced on Wednesday, October sixteenth, irrigation repairs on Mauna Lani Community Park are scheduled to begin. And require the closure of the parking lot until approximately four P M each day. Uh, the work is scheduled to take three days and should be pulled by the weekend. Um, the uh, October monthly newsletter is on the chat and any other um, important. Webex links are, our website links are on the chat. Um, the other thing too is um, at bot, for, on October, um, on, on Boss's October newsletter. Um, we talk about how um, there was a tenth anniversary um, bucket challenge for ALS. That the council member, that the council did. Um, the other thing is in September, there was um. The Hawaii State Association of Counties, HSAAC Conference that was held last month at the Kahala Hotel. That all different um, council members came from different counties all over the islands. And some also from uh, Minnesota that came to talk and discuss about. Different kinds of various topics that had um, maybe incentives or any kind of new ideas uh, for our counties. Um, the other thing too is that my boss, councilmember Sei, um, got a lifetime achievement award. Um, at the last dinner, um, at the um, convention. And the last thing that I do um, wanna say is. We're gonna have, it's, it's your sister town, uh, Palolo Valley's gonna have a cleanup on October twenty-sixth. Um, on his newsletter, he has a QR code if anybody wants to come and volunteer. Um, it's gonna be one of the last big cleanups we're gonna be doing in uh, councilmembers' term. So if you guys want to come out and volunteer, it's gonna be in Palolo Valley. And it's the um, Palolo Valley Plantation, so it's behind the rec center. It's um, should be pretty fun. So if you guys want to come, um, the, there is a QR code on his web, on his newsletter. And if there's any questions, I'm here.
All right. Thank you. Questions for council member Se and his office?
Brian, could I just follow up with?
Sure. Go ahead.
That, uh, Pua did not disclose. We find the parking for the cleanup, it will be in Palolo Housing. The plantation is in the proximity and complex of the Palolo Housing project that we have in the valley. And it's called the plantation, which we thought that would be nice for all of us to try to help, to support the residents to clean it up. And the other concern that I wanted to bring up this evening for all of you in the Kamaki district is that on Tent and Harding, where we have that H1 overpass, Brian, there were about ten to twelve cars of our residents and families who were affected by that individual who is now going back onto the streets and throwing nails, attacks. Just this past Tuesday at the, uh, Harding Avenue se- seventy, seven, Union Seventy-Six, there were about ten cars that went in to see if their tires could be replaced. So I just wanted to make you folks aware, and if there's anything like that happening, please call nine-one-one, the police department. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Thanks for giving us a heads up with that. All right. Any, uh, questions for council member Se in his office? Comments? All right. If not, thank you very much, council member Se, Pua. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, so we're gonna move on to Governor Josh Green's representative. Is Amanda Stevens on?
Good afternoon.
Amanda, go ahead.
Good evening, I should say. Um, I've added the newsletter into the chat. Um, but one of the things I wanted to highlight is being aware of the blind community. So right now, we are celebrating the Thirty-First Annual White Cane Walk. That's gonna be happening this Friday. It's, um, hosted by Ho'oponopono Services for the Blind. The purpose of this event is to increase the public's awareness of white cane and its significance and the importance for persons with, um, visually impaired or blindness. You're invited to come to the walk. It's downtown Honolulu to remind Hawaii motorists, bus drivers, everyone, um, that safety is important. It's Friday, October twentieth, nine-thirty. And the walk begins at ten. So you might wanna, um, pre-register. It's, it's, the walk is getting more and more participants each year. You might see on an overhead pass when you're on the freeway. Department of Transportation last year, um, posted a nice reminder of people to drive with aloha and be aware of the white cane. Um, one of our participants actually helps to teach bus drivers what to look for. Um, and it's really helped with a lot of, um, safety measures for those. And we're looking at folks from ages four through a hundred and four. So we hope you would be able to join the Ho'oponopono Services for the Blind. Um, when you take a look at the newsletter, um, you're gonna find, um, in- information about Haimea and, um, more information about Maui relief. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take it back. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Amanda. Any questions or comments for the governor's representative in the board? Public? All right. If not, thank you very much, Amanda. Thanks for the information and the updates. Okay, so we'll move on to State Senator Chang Lee, uh, Stanley Chang's office.
Aloha, everyone. My name is Angie. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Um, I'm with Senator Chang's office. I'm putting the links in the chat to his September monthly district newsletter as well as a link to sign up for his housing newsletter. Just a couple, um, announcements. Department of State has fully launched its new online passport renewal system, streamlining the process for all American citizens. And you can now renew your passport online in the link. And also, um, encourage you to take a short ten-minute survey to share with our state libraries how they can better serve you. And you can use the link in the chat as well. That's all I have, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take it back to Senator Chang's office.
All right. Uh, thank you, Angie. Any questions for Senator Chang's, uh, office? For the board or the public? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Angie. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, uh, so the next agenda item is State Senator Lesihara. Uh, he emailed me earlier this evening. He is not able to attend this evening. So we will move on to State Sen- uh, State Representative Bertrand Obayashi. Is anyone on for Representative Obayashi's office? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to State Representative Jackson Sayama.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, members of the public. I'm kind of see, um, just wanna give a brief summary. Uh, today I had a very productive, uh, meeting and conference with the Hawaii State, uh, Nursing Center. Um, just brainstorming future ideas and solutions to address the workforce shortage, uh, for the nursing, um, as well as, uh, kind of approaches to make sure that we retain that local workforce. Um, for future events, of course, um, we have a election on November fifth. Um, so I would encourage everyone to check out your mailbox. Uh, we should be receiving those, uh, ballots soon. Uh, and to also check out the voter guide, uh, from the Office of Elections. You could find information about the candidates, uh, there. And so, you know, it's good to stay educated in that respect as well. Uh, you'll also see two questions, um, about constitutional amendments. Um, one relating to marriage equality and the other relating to more uniform processes for judicial appointments and confirmations. Uh, so that, uh, information is on the Office of Elections website as well. Uh, future events, um, this Saturday, we have, uh, Sustainable Coastlines or Ghost Lines Festival, um, at Ali Alani Elementary. Uh, this will be happening from three to eight PM where community members could come together and clean up, uh, the neighborhood. They'll be providing you with gloves, bags, tongs to put the trash in. And once they've collected the trash, you can enjoy the festivities. There's gonna be plenty food vendors, uh, retail vendors at Ali Alani Elementary School. So feel free to come. Uh, you could still sign up and register on their website. Um, next, we also have the Honolulu Pride Parade. Also on Saturday, the parade is at four PM. The festival starts at five PM. This will be happening in Waikiki Shell. Uh, the parade's gonna be down Kalakaua Avenue. Um, and I don't think you need to register for that. Uh, next, we have November second, Saturday, once again. Uh, this is the Twenty Twenty Four Walk to End Alzheimer's. Um, this will be located at Magic Island and the walk starts at nine AM. Uh, registration is required for this, so I encourage you to do so on their website. Um, also, in-person check-in is available and registration is available at seven-thirty that day. Finally, uh, we have the Twenty Twenty Four Hawaii Walk, uh, to Cure ALS, uh, as was previously mentioned. Uh, and so this will be happening November ninth at Kapua Lani Park. Um, check-in opens at eight and the walk will start at nine AM. Um, this one also requires a sign up and registration, so please do so on their website at Hawaii Rock Walk and Roll to Cure ALS. Uh, with that, I am available for questions.
All right. Thank you, Representative Sayama. Any questions for Representative Sayama from the board? Or the public? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Representative Sayama, for the information, the updates. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, uh, so we will move on. Is anyone from Congressman Ed Kees's office on? All right. Seeing none. Uh, announcements? It appears we have no announcements. And moving on to board business approval of the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four written summary of video record. So my understanding is that, um, the version that is currently posted of the written summary of video record is going to be revised. Um, or it has been revised and will be posted. Um, so we, uh, we're gonna defer that item until the next meeting. Okay, reports, uh, members attendance at other meetings? Have any members attended any other meetings to report on? All right. Seeing none. The next meeting of this board is on Wednesday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at six-thirty PM at the Kamaki Public Library, right here. And remotely via Webex. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.